Thank you.
Quorum, so we’ll resume the meeting. Councilor Hicks, you were the next to indicate to speak, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I want to thank Lynn for her report. Thank you as well to the staff for organizing today. It was the largest crowd I’ve ever seen in this building. And I’m sure it took a lot to organize all of that, so I just want to acknowledge the work of staff and thank you for organizing. Lastly, I also thank the people who are actually here because, again, democracy at play and, you know, showing your interest in this is obviously a very important issue and a very kind of issue you can get passionate about, I think. I just want to say that, for me, one of the most impactful things in this process was the presentation that we had from the Lynn. When we heard from the Lynn, we were told that the closure of Rockwood and its impact on Hanover and Chesley, areas like that, would be of a concern to them. So for me, it seems, at the end of the day, that the decision around whether we—what we do with Rockwood is fairly straightforward. I don’t see—uh, for me anyways—I’m speaking for myself—I think the decision about whether we rebuild Rockwood is pretty plain on its face. We need a long-term care facility in Durham. That brings me to what we do about Gray Gables, because when the Lynn made their presentation, they didn’t express the same concern about the closure of Gray Gables as they had expressed a similar concern for Rockwood. So that weighs on me. But then, we have to look at the fact that it’s—what, there are 106 employees at Gray Gables? That’s 106 families, 106 lives that are established by a status quo, a decision that they made. If they’re working in that area, probably bought a home, have lives there, have children, have children who are attending schools. So we have to consider that human impact. Yes, you might say it’s not that far to go from, you know, from there to Durham. But if you’re living in Stainer, and maybe you’re already commuting from the east, and you’re going to Markdale on a daily basis, a further commute to Durham would be impactful. And so I think we do have to consider—that. For me, I go back to why do we have three facilities? Our forefathers and the people that were before us established three locations for a reason. Maybe that’s a question that I want to pose. First of all, do we recall why we have three locations? And secondly, has the reason for having three locations changed? That’ll be my first question.
I was listening to you and thinking that was a general question that we would be thinking towards. The reason we have three homes—I wasn’t around back in 1903, when the county decided to open a home for the aged. However, at that time, you have to think of what road structure was like, how people moved, where was the train, and that type of thing. So that’s just my first thought of how the Home for the Aged was established in the rural part—in the rural setting of Markdale. I do know in Le—for Lee Manor, the Lee family estate, there is a bequest for the building of a seniors’ home in Owensound. And it was a sizable donation, and that is what encouraged the county, the city, and the province to put some funds together with that family donation to build Lee Manor. Rockwood Terrace, that was on the books, and from what I look back and read, it was actually being talked about prior to Lee Manor being built. But when the bequest came forward from the Lee family, that kind of put that project on hold, and the build was in Owensound first. What I think—somebody mentioned it around the horseshoe here—is seniors previously that were provided care in our home, they were a different type of senior. We would receive applications for admission directly. The home would look at it and say, “You’ve got a catheter. I’m sorry, you can’t come here. You have a wheelchair. I’m sorry, we have too many, we can’t accommodate that.” And the county had bigger opportunity—or greater opportunity to decide who was moving in. And that’s how county homes were recognized then as retirement homes, rest homes, homes for the aged. You get old, I’m going up to the house on the hill or back in that neighborhood. And so great county and municipalities have kind of got pulled into long-term care by default. The ministry changed the rules, the needs became higher, and they changed the Municipal Homes Act to the Long Term Care Homes Act, and we have the same criteria as all other long-term care homes. We do not have much choice on who comes into our homes. We receive the application, there’s very specific reasons why we can decline an admission. But even if you decline, you have to notify the family, and you have to notify the CCAC as to the rationale. And sometimes the reason is, we cannot handle that acuity of person at this time. So that application will circle back around. So why there’s three homes, I think the short answer is, the care we provided back in the previous days was totally different. It paid for itself. People came in, they paid their bills, they walked, you know, to wherever they went in the home for dining room activities or whatever those things were. So the care’s changed. Does that answer it?
I guess, yes, it does. The answer that I’m hearing is that it is different.
Yes.
That maybe we ought to be reconsidering that decision that was made for three and bringing it down to two. I’m not sure that I’m totally convinced on that, though. I have to—
Okay.
—have to say that I’m still struggling with that decision. I am—I like what I see in terms of drawing attention to what is a big and growing need for memory and cognitive impairment care and support. I agree with that. I guess I question, why couldn’t we provide that service or that care in all three facilities? And maybe that’s my question. Could we do that?
Within long-term care, we do provide for a level of care. But the requirement for admission to long-term care is very high, physical or cognitive needs, and that’s the assessment through CCAC. There’s plenty of people living in our communities where you’re checking—you know, families are checking in on mom or dad, or aunt and uncle, brother and sister, and caring for each others in the community. And there comes a time when they need a little bit more care than that. And so that’s where your private assisted living, memory care comes into place.
Could we do it in the three facilities that we have right now?
That is similar to the question that Mr. Greenfield asked. And yes, assisted living can be added on to long-term care as a separate service.
So if we built a new Rockwood, we could anticipate that we were planning to provide that service in addition to the 100 beds and plan for that?
If that is the aim of council, to expand their provision of senior services, it definitely could be done.
The last area that I’m struggling with is with respect to moving towards a management company. I’m not sure that I fully appreciate or understand the full benefits of having a management company versus status quo. Can you—can you help me with that?
Long-term care is highly legislated, highly regulated, and the ministry is out there fast and furious. The long-term care sector and the people we serve are vulnerable seniors. We are getting pushed with new requirements for care, new requirements for service, and with our existing staffing resources, we can’t get to everything we need to. Onboarding 90 new employees last year, that takes time, and that’s done off the side of somebody’s desk, right? Developing new policies to deal with new changes coming in, that takes time. And actually, to get out to the homes and do an evaluation from a risk perspective, a compliance perspective by a third party is really valuable, in the sense that it’s better for them to find areas where we could improve before the ministry comes in and says, deficient, deficient, deficient. For the ministry, if they find one incidence of something not being 100% meeting the act, it’s a deficiency. It used to be that they’d look and say, “Huh, that doesn’t quite meet it. Fix it up, will ya?” As long as it wasn’t prevalent. Now, if they see an issue, it’s an order, or it’s a recommendation, or there’s a deficiency. So just to—if Gray County municipalities have to be in the business, it’s important that we provide a good quality care and service that we can be proud of, that you can sit back and say, “There’s somebody doing that second look to make sure.” It doesn’t mean there will never be problems. There will always be problems when you’re dealing with 316 residents and their families and staff. There will always be things. But it just reduces our risk and improves the quality and the outcome.
Commissioner Halliday.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Lynn, for all those good answers. I just want to say that when Ian retired, received his retirement after 37 years, brought back fond memories of me retiring 38 years ago and from a business career and deciding that Gray County was the place that I wanted to live. I like it because it’s wide-open spaces, and it’s—and I appreciate that we have special geographic issues because of those wide-open spaces, but that’s why I moved here. So recognizing that we have three long-term care homes recognizes the geographical footprint of Gray County, which is part of its beauty. And I don’t want to see that—I don’t want to see those—that idea compromised. Commissioner Echols says he likes super-long-term care homes, but the government has failed in many ways on super jails and super schools. I’m not entirely convinced that super-long-term care is the answer. Efficiency is something that we have to—we’ll have to look at, and we’ll have to study that and really see whether it matters. But one of the things that I really just wanted to talk about is the future demographic profile. I was one of those citizens that owned a property in Gray County and moved up here in 2000. That move and becoming a permanent resident, it is not recognized in any statistics. There are 3,206 homes in the Town of Blue Mountains owned by people that pay taxes. They’re not counted in any of our profiles, all right? Those people have bought and invested in the Town of Blue Mountains and in Gray County. They do pay their taxes, and they’re not recognized in any profiles. Most of them are moving towards that baby boomer, perhaps, retirement. You have to recognize that that’s a phantom that we—number that we really need to recognize. The other thing is, the Gray Highlands has 1,395 homes that are owned by what we call weekenders, all right? And we have—that’s not reflected. So there are a lot of people that are not reflected in the growth statistics that are captured. I think we really have to recognize that. I wrote a report in 2009 to our council stating that that’s part of our economic growth. We’ve got their homes, we’ve got their taxes, but now we want them to start to live here longer and invest and look at new businesses, and also look at shopping in Gray County. So just watch and understand there’s some demographics there that aren’t being recognized. Thank you.
Mr. Schertz are making some notes for the future, so, okay. Commissioner McQueen?
Thank you again, Mr. Warden. Just sort of a good discussion this morning, and I must say that we have generally a pretty good crowd here. Just with regards, I guess, to you, Lynn, and I forget when exactly what—it was, but we had representatives here from the Linds basically saying, “We could not get any more long-term beds.” They basically said, “No more long-term beds.” So I guess that’s what we’re sort of hanging, moving forward. But we do know that, just as a side, there is an election coming in, what, 14 months?
I guess.
Possibility with the new government. That could change. Who knows? But we still need to deal with what the direction is today. You talk about regulation, and I know Commissioner Hicks talked about the regulation changes, and a couple of things—I guess, as we all remember, not that long ago, the situation that happened in Waukerton and the Clean Water Act that came under that, which was a very—would change the regulations in serving water. But we didn’t bail, we had to conform to those new regulations, and we move on. And we all are conforming to those new regulations to provide healthy and clean water to the people. It’s just part of—it’s just part of what we should be doing and what we are doing. I guess in a sense of—I think—Mr. Echols mentioned about a vision. And I think our forefathers did give us a vision, and that was for three homes in the county of Gray. What’s happening, as you say, Lynn, is that the level of care has changed, and certainly it has. And I’ve heard that’ll, you know, basically—it’s to the point where it needs 24/7 care, where I know we all try to look after parents or parents or aging people are in that situation where they try to live as long as they can on their own. But it gets to the point—and there is assisted living, there is the ACCA—there’s the assistance.
Community Care Access Center.
Which is great, that is out there. And I know the province is—it’s a huge—there’s a huge wave coming. And I think part of our planning—and I look back to Renity, where they’ve changed opportunities where you can have secondary dwellings and primary residence. And I think the province is saying—or starting to see that, “We’ve got to do something or there’s going to be a huge situation coming.” But saying that, I would say, for a vision-wise, I think let’s look at the opportunity to not only look at long-term, as we know we can’t get any more beds, but look at the opportunity of assisted living being part of that model. Part of that model that—and you know, as it has been suggested, that Gray Gables be sold to a company that would provide assisted living, well, again, assisted living is for profit. And when it becomes for profit, that means the cost goes up. And so maybe the county of Gray, it’s a cost to our taxpayers and our tax base. But I think first, let’s go to our taxpayers and ask them that question. Maybe it’s broken down into the cost per house or whatever. Let’s ask them what they feel of that portion of our taxes being put toward long-term care. I know, just as a side, we know recently where the taxpayers of the province of Ontario built the 407. And you know where the 407 went? The 407 went to a private company. You know, it certainly doesn’t help the class of commuters going to work on the 407 because it keeps going up. There’s private sector, and there’s private industry, and there’s private business. So I think we have to, you know, as a side, we have seen that in the past. I just want to say one other thing, Mr. Warden. And this was a something—I have two parents that are in their 80s, and my mother, who I think is around 81. And she gave me a poem that was written by a fellow from Owensound. His name is J. E. Morris, and it was written in 1957. And in respect to my mother, Mr. Warden, I would like to read this poem. And I think this goes to the light of vision, and the vision that I think our forefathers had. “If you happen to live in the county of Gray, you live in a happy, contented way; for that’s where our boys grow big and strong, that’s where our girls break out in song. In no other place could you live so long and love the living every day. If you take a drive through the county of Gray, you’ll see dairy cows and herds of beef and acres and acres of the maple leaf. If you take a drive when the leaves come loose, you’ll see plenty of apples for apple juice. Apples to eat and apples for pie, for Gray is the home of the northern spy. We build some ships to sail the seas, we raise some chickens and keep some bees. We grow garden stuff and fruits galore, there’s bread and cheese in every store. Our bacon and eggs, they can’t be beat, for we feed our hogs on cream of wheat. We pay our taxes and say our prayers, though none of us are millionaires. We live like kings on the land we tell, we come and go of our own free will. And people who live here every day are the salt of the earth in the county of Gray”—and I’ll read that again—“are the salt of the earth of the county of Gray.” And that’s the people we are here in Gray County. And we look after ourselves, and we look after our people, and we stand up, and we do maybe do things differently, but we certainly represent them.”[1152.08][1152.08](APPLAUSE).
Commissioner Adell is next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I’d like to thank Commissioner Halliday for putting Blue Mountains where we are standing in this. We have one private nursing—or long-term care and nursing home. I’m not sure of the amount of beds that they have there, but our population is growing. And our citizens in our town are paying the biggest assessment throughout all of the horseshoe people here. We pay almost 27%. And then there is a lot of residents in the Town of the Blue Mountains that are in Gray Gables right now. And if Gray Gables was to close, our residents then will be transported over to Durham. And it’s very emotional. When we talk about long-term care, when we talk about hospitals, we talk about our families. And in our busy lives that we have today, if one of my parents—I don’t have any parents left—but if they were in Durham, I would have to, you know, have time off from work to be able to go visit them and driving about an hour and a quarter to get there, and then back again. That’s a long amount of time to be trying to visit families and consuming everything else that happens during the day. So I’m looking at this. There was one question that I have for Lynn about the Southwest Lynn. We are in a different Lynn than the Southwest Lynn. So they’re making recommendations that we have Aaron Rung and we have the Meaford Nursing Home, and we could be put on a waiting list for the Collingwood. Collingwood has huge amounts of waiting lists because those are Simcoe County residents. Our people are paying taxes in Gray County. I think they deserve to be staying in Gray County for long-term care. I just don’t know where Southwest Lynn gets their figures. Have they consulted with the Lynn in our municipality in Simcoe County to be able to say that our residents would be able to get into those homes?
Okay, through the warden. The Southwest Lynn looked at the demographics for Thornberry and Meaford, which are part of the Southwest Lynn. People can apply to live in long-term care anywhere in the province. We cannot restrict admissions to our homes from Gray County. And we currently have residents coming into our homes, being transferred out of the area so they can be closer to their family. Right? So people are transparent, move back and forth. The Lynn’s figures from the July presentation did show that there was adequate supply in the Meaford-Thornberry area. And I’ll pull that slide for you, just so that you know which one I’m referring to, that there is adequate supply there for the number of residents 75 years of age and older. So that’s how they look at it. It’s system planning and saying, “Where are the beds?” And a county bed is no different than a private bed. They’re long-term care beds, they’re funded from the ministry, and they are held to the same legislation. But I do know both the home in Blue Mountains and Meaford are both on that list that need to be redeveloped, so there will be changes.
Do you elaborate on what kind of changes?
Oh, no, there will be changes, like there will be new homes or new beds or, you know, they have to upgrade, too. They’re on the exact same timeline as what we are, 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, we’ve had a really good discussion. The motion that’s on the floor is to receive the report. Any other comments? Commissioner Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I’ll try to be brief. There’s been a lot of really good points made. Throughout all of this, and not having had the previous tenure of some of my colleagues, I’ve done a great deal of looking back in the documented history and so forth. And I certainly also want to acknowledge the effort that a lot of people have made toward trying to make the right decision. It was mentioned previously—or questioned previously, what’s the vision? What I see is not just challenge, but opportunity. Some of the challenges that I see that we face are that we’re being asked to make decisions which, I will say, are huge. You know, we could pass an annual budget, and if we screw that up, we can fix it next year. This is totally different. This is going to have implications for decades. So it’s really important we get this right. The vision, I think, has to be shaped by the people who elected us to represent them. We need to have that input.[1463.03][1463.03](APPLAUSE). And I’m also very sensitive to the fact that there’s been a lot of historic and recurring and recent discussions about hospitals and health in general. So when we talk about the Lynn’s input on this, and when we talk about the assisted living and, you know, in-home and the whole continuum of what is that need now and how is that need going to change and continue to change, I think it’s critically important that we have as much information as we can on that and also incorporate what do we truly believe is going to happen with the hospitals in the short and long term. Because I have to say, it seems like a bit of a moving target, and I think it’s really important that we have that piece of information as well. In terms of—in terms of actual choices, absolutely, I don’t think anybody can argue that the demographic is going to increase. I am not going to talk specifically about, you know, the lower-tier municipality that I and my deputy mayor represent. We are looking at some significant growth, but this is a discussion about the county. And looking across the county, I don’t see that this need is going to diminish, it’s going to increase. And I think that it’s very important that we involve—the people that we represent in making the decision about how do we want to invest in the respect and dignity of our seniors in their most vulnerable years. You know, there was mentioned before about how we can quantify this. I’m not a—I’m not a chartered accountant. I rely heavily on the expertise of our Director of Finance. Having looked at some of the numbers, I question, you know, whether or not we can’t not just maintain what we’re providing right now, but truly account for what our vision is and should be for what could equate to no more than the cost of your favorite drive-thru beverage on a weekly basis. And without that information, I’m hesitant to say this is the direction that we should go. So I’m very grateful for the opportunity to revisit this in the future. I also look forward to the opportunities for public engagement. I think it’s tremendous that people are taking the opportunity to be involved in this decision. I guess one of the questions that I want to put out there is, what do we expect that we’re going to be looking at in the way of new information, if any, come our next discussion in May? And I would hope that we would do everything that we can to make all of the information that’s relevant readily available, live links, one place. You know, it’s been said many times that too much information, you know, analysis, paralysis, whatever the term of—the choice of words is. My view is that you put the information out there, you let people decide what they want to read, and allow them to make an informed decision about how they think we should proceed. And we were elected to represent people, and I want to know what they think. I know what I think, but I want to know what they think. And I want them to make an informed decision in conveying that to me on their behalf. Thank you, Mr. Warden.[1695.15][1695.15](APPLAUSE).
Okay. Any—really good discussion on this. Is there anything else, then, before we call the vote then on the motion, which is just to receive the report? Commissioner Echols?
Thank you. And I think Commissioner Hicks asked a question, and I guess that’s what comes from historical data. How do we end up with three homes? And I think Lynn gave a pretty good overview of Lee Manor and Rockwood. But we’ve got to go back to Gray Gables was the home of refuge, 1903. And up until 1999, I think it had a bit of paint and a few doors changed and a few things like that. ’96, ’97, council of Gray County, you know, we’ve got to do something with it. And at that point in time, yeah, there were 66 beds came forward, and a very large and expansive building, architecturally pleasing, arrived. And it’s there. That’s, you know, where it’s come from. The province put it there. I go back to the—you know, the other thing is, am I promoting a super? No, I’m not. Because Lee Manor, if you put these two homes together, Lee Manor would still be bigger, and I think it’s not super or anything of that nature, Stuart. So just to clarify what my point was, putting the two is not for cost effectiveness, but it’s care effectiveness, again, is what I’m saying. but it's care effectiveness, again, is what I'm saying, going into the future and the vision. The other factor, the other one is, and I've got no problem, but the question has got to be answered here is, are we going to continue putting 27% of Blue Mountains' funding that's ratcheting up continuously into long-term care and maintaining a tax level that those individuals that are coming from Kitchener or Toronto, because West Gray has Township of Gannell, 50% are weekend people? So how are we going to maintain that tax level at affordability? Because we know that hydro, that's been pretty well discussed and debated and how far it's gone out of whack. We don't want to go down that road. But that's the road that I see us going in the vision if all of a sudden we're going to start adding retirement and assisted living. Prominent question goes back. What is property tax dollars for? Who pays for what? And it's like the old saying goes, the pot's been slowly warming up and the frog didn't know enough to jump out of it. And now it's starting to boil. Here we are, at this level, and talking about taking more on from the province. Is that income distribution or property tax? And if we continue to take it on, the province will continue to download it to us and will take it gladly and open her arms. And in 10 years or 20 years' time, it will be the people that are around this horseshoe, and it won't be me, are going, what were they thinking? What were they thinking when they built Gray Gables to the size? And Bob, Al, you were here, I think, Dwight, Arlene, we had to put a new roof on it. We had a debenture. Gray County had a debenture to put a new roof on because of the way that building was designed. I'm not saying it's wrong, but wow. And that's, it was a house of refuge. Well, we've got to rebuild it. Well, we'll get long-term care homes in there, long-term care beds. Nobody looked at what it's going to be in 20 years' time. I'm not saying that the crystal ball sitting in front of me is very clear. But we've got to take that heavily into account before we make this decision. And I'm supportive. Thank you, Bob, for putting it on that we've got a month to digest this and get the information to the people. It's not what it was in 1957, what Gray County was. Because I could stop at four hotels between here and home in 1957. Not one of them is open today. Gray County's changed dramatically. And we're here to see what the vision and where it's going to be in another 20, 30, 60 years.
Counsel Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Lynn, if I may, you made a comment earlier, and I overlooked the opportunity to clarify. You mentioned that the province could provide notice at any time. And you mentioned 2022 in that context. Could you elaborate on that?
Okay. The legislation says that at least three years prior to the expiry of the license, they can provide notice. So that's 2022. But I also read it when it says at least, that could be anytime. So in looking at the demographics provincially and where beds are really in short supply, if there's the right pressure at the provincial level, they may decide to realign and move beds and switch things up. So I see that as a risk for Gray County in maintaining the beds that we have here. So that's what that comment was.
So thank you very much. And to that point, I think it's all the more important that we have the best information that we can possibly get with what the vision is at the provincial level. Because, you know, to hear comments like, you know, who knew what the vision was 20 years ago? If we fail to understand that now, then we're just going to perpetuate some of the investments that apparently weren't, and I'm not going to say good, but maybe not ideal. So, you know, I would, I would advocate that this council should have a new visit from the Lynn. I would advocate that maybe we want representation from the province and truly get the picture for what they envision. And, you know, furthermore, perhaps, we're getting to the stage where municipalities, rather than listening to what the province said, maybe we should take the approach of the people behind us and we should be lobbying them and explaining to them the way things are at the ground level. But that's another aside. I did want to touch on the comment earlier about economic development. Giving consideration to the challenges that were mentioned with regard to staffing. You know, simultaneously, we're talking about challenges in staffing. And in the same breath, I think we all agree that our young people don't have any opportunities. Well, I've spoken to some young people. And not surprisingly, there's an interest in, you know, exploring opportunities in healthcare. And maybe in all of this, we should have that in mind because we're not necessarily living in a society where everybody's going to get plugged into a full-time 44 hours a week. I'm, you know, explaining to my sons that you need to have more than one trade. You can't be a one-trick wonder. So I think that this does create an opportunity. And I, we talk about the challenges, but we have to look at them in the context of what the opportunity is. And I look forward to more information and the opportunity to make sure that when we move forward, that we've taken the time to get the bigger vision from the province and know that, quite frankly, our decisions aren't going to be limited by lack of insight at higher levels and influence. So I'll leave it at that. I thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Warden.
Hey, Counsel Wright?
Thank you, Warden. And I just want to comment on a remark that Sheldon made. And I don't want Sheldon to think that we're coming down on him this morning or anything like that. At any time on a holiday, or on a holiday, any time on a workday, Highway 21 from east and west, Highway 6 and 10 coming up from the south is full of cars of people coming in going down to work. Our hospital has many, many people from Markdale, Flesherton, Dundalk, that area, Durham, Hanover, they come up to work. So, and in the county building, we have people that come from Markdale, Hanover, and so I don't think that really has a bearing on it. People are in mobile these days and tend to live where they want to live and work where they can find work.
Hey, Counsel Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Lynn, thanks very much for all the information. We've been inundated with information over the last year and a half. So I guess my question, you know, it's kind of a follow-up from Counsel Fosbrook. What other information are we going to receive? Like, I think I'm in a position where I can make a decision. I'm not sure how my other colleagues feel. But, you know, we have a lot of people that are anxious about this decision. We have residents, we have family members, we have staff that need to know. So I don't know what other information is going to be coming to us. Personally, you know, with the demographics, I certainly believe that we are going to need more long-term care beds. We're certainly going to need retirement home beds also. I'm interested that we could attach some of those to our existing homes. But in fairness to families and residents, I think they should be served in their home community. So I would certainly support going ahead with the redevelopment of Rockwood and keeping Gray Gables status quo. Does that?
I guess, just to your comment about what more information we could have. From a communication standpoint, we wanted to make sure that we were able to go to the public. So we will have the public's comments then as far as the two meetings to be able to provide for County Council. That's been a comment that has been made. So Counsel McKean?
Yes, thank you, Warden, bar of fun. I guess that my concern would be, and I think it goes back to Counsel Echols' comment about, you know, our tax support of this is 6.1 million. And, you know, in the future, it could possibly go to 10. I was wondering if, prior to May 11th, if we would be able to have a closed-session meeting? Maybe staff have some, you know, what the personnel structure is going to look like at that particular time? I do believe that the ratepayers of Gray County, you know, if we're going to go this, I think we should be able to give them some numbers of what the continuing care would be or an enhanced level of that. I think we do, we do owe them that. I think that, I don't think we need a referendum on it, but I think that we would, sure should have that information available at some point in time before we make this decision.
Still making some notes. Lynn?
And I was going to say, maybe it will take time to gather specific information. So I would suggest, rather than prior to May 11th, maybe we just push it out another two weeks. Like, you know, make it for May 11th and then move it forward from there. Just to keep things moving. I just get a little nervous when I hear in one month, we'll come back and do something because a month passes pretty quick.
Okay. I think we've had an excellent discussion on this. The motion on the floor then is to receive, and we have discussed it obviously to great length, and that the report then, or that we have discussion again for May the 11th. So that's one final call. Just if it's some new information, Counsel McQueen?
So I have public engagement sessions. Are these going to be recorded and sent this today? But however they?
Use your mic, please, Paul.
Public engagements, one at Durham and one at Markdale. How is that going to be captured? So if some of us can't be there, or how is that going to get the feedback so we can get all that information?
Yep.
We can certainly make those arrangements if that's what people would prefer. We'll, did you work with folks here to?
Sure.
The intent originally was similar to what was done in Durham, where there were people there who were scribing throughout the evening?
But if you could do, I think, with the company that's doing it today and then have that so it could be uploaded to our website, I think that would be really valuable information. So then it's captured, and it protects everybody for what was being said also. There's no WhatsApps or whatever. It's there, people can see it. So it's very true to the fact. Thank you.
Hey. Going to call Counsel Fosbrook, something new?
No, Mr. Warden. Could we get the resolution that we're voting on in front of us, please?
The report, LT-CRCW-05-17, we received and discussed and that the recommendations in the report be deferred until the May 11th, 2017 committee, the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Going to call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you very much, everyone. That was a really good information session. So let's take five minutes before we come back. We moved and seconded that the correspondence from the municipality of Gray Highlands regarding a long-term care strategy requesting Gray County engage the lower-tier municipalities in a consultative framework to ensure that all existing future and existing social, economic factors are examined and inclusive of all key stakeholders be received for information. Any further discussion then on that motion? Counsel Halliday?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You'll notice that that was written on June the 27th, that motion that came up from Gray Highlands. I'm not saying it's Gray County's fault that it didn't get on the agenda until later on because it got lost in the summer shuffle. But however, the information that we were receiving at the time after the first presentation from Siena, we felt was very controversial in the sense that there was no really strong information coming on a cost-benefit analysis, et cetera. So what we were hoping is that the county, rather than just deferring it, would have taken, undertaken a cost-benefit analysis of any decisions that we make. I still see this as a necessary process. You know, when you, when you look at some, whether you want to call it cost-benefit analysis or SWOT analysis, there are, there are strategies to look at for attempting, looking at opportunities that, and change. And we haven't, we haven't adopted any of those processes. So if we come back here on May the 11th, which I appreciate, we still haven't done what I call due diligence on a cost-benefit analysis of any of the decisions, the alternatives, all right? We had three scenarios. We need to look at, other than a perspective from Siena, which had, what I almost can say, a bit of a conflict in its, in its approach. We haven't had a look at the CBELIS report because when we were on Social Services, we were looking to get some more information because I certainly was upset that Rockwood had a zero value in the Siena report's situation. So I just felt that we need, we need to do something. So if we don't do anything, we'll come back here on May the 11th with a whole bunch of reports. I'd like to see a strategic process. When we did a strategic plan, we hired a consultant, we worked through, we worked through the analysis. We had an all-day meeting. I think we need an all-day meeting on this particular situation so that we can roll up our sleeves and really dig into the information. And I see this as being a very strategic decision. And I think that we need to, we need to look at a process to get to the bottom of the consequences, plus and minus.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Counsel Halliday, I can confirm a couple of things. First of all, the letter from Gray Highlands did come to Social Services on September 29th. And it was then asked to be brought back at the time that the report was available. So that's what we did do. We did take the direction from the Social Services Committee. I can also confirm for all of council that the CBRE, the full CBRE report, which I do think you will find of some interest with regard to the analysis, that will be available. And there will be plenty of time for everyone to take, be able to fully review that before the meeting on the 11th. I've also heard a question around the table about reconfirming some information from the Lynn. And we'll also take that suggestion forward and see if we can't get them to either come and speak to us or provide us with the most up-to-date figures. Because as Lynn's indicated, this is a situation that is very fluid, and we continue to see changes in what our private sector partners are doing.
Counsel Halliday?
Yes, we did have Michael Barrett of the Southwest Lynn come to a meeting in Flesherton last fall. And he did say at the time that the provinces recognize that the Linds, the boundaries of the Linds are not doing their proper job in Gray County. We were, you know, we're subjected to having three different Linds right now. And so he did promise, and I'm sure that legislation is moving forward, that the Lynn, there will be only one Lynn, let's say, that we have to address in Gray County. And it'll have other parts, but in Gray County, there will only be one Lynn. So what I'm asking for, and what I was asking for back then, will only be one LIN. So, what I'm asking for, and what I was asking for back then, and I have no problem with how Gray County handled this, you know, the process of moving this through Social Services, I'd like a one-day forum by an outside consultant to sit down and let's take this apart. Let's look at it. To come back on May the 11th, where we really haven't looked at it, I think is wrong. We will have the input from the public on two different meetings, and then I would suggest sometime in April, like we did with the strategic planning, let's look at it. Let's get input. Let's work through it. That's my suggestion.
Well, it's been noted by staff, so we'll talk to the... I will remind everyone that the Warden's Forum that's coming up in April, Michael Barrett will be attending from the LIN. It all went to every council, to all of yous as mayors. So, hopefully, you can participate and attend, and that's, you know, Michael's hoping for, obviously, some questions after his presentation, so. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Any further comments before a call of vote? Call the vote, then, all in favor? Opposed, if any. That's carried. Item C. Do a mover to put that on the floor, please, regarding alternate signage from Highway 26 to Gray Road 19 and Gray Road 2. Do we have a mover? Moved by Councilor Ardell, seconded by Councilor Jack. Pat? Mr. Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report is addressing a resolution passed by the Town of Blue Mountains in support of the Highway 26 alternative route. Page 66 of your package is, there's a map of the alternative route. Basically, it's kind of using Gray Road 2, Gray Road 19, Poplar Side Road to bypass Collingwood and Craig Leith. So, when we first got this, we, you know, got a letter from staff at Town of Blue Mountains. We were just not quite sure what the purpose was of using Gray County roads as a bypass for MTO roads. As we looked kind of more into it, we realized that the MTO Highway 26 Transportation Needs Study indicated that there could be a bypass around Collingwood, a bypass around Thornbury, but there would be a widening of four to five lanes, basically from Gray Road 21 to Gray Road 40, give or take, you know, a few hundred meters here or there. But, so the town was very concerned that a four- or five-laning between Gray Road 21 and Gray Road 40 would have a large impact on its residents. So, I think they were kind of hoping that if people could start using this bypass, that it would maybe delay that four- or five-laning. So, we had a meeting in May 2016 with Town of Blue Mountain staff, Collingwood, some Simcoe staff, and ourselves. And at the meeting, Collingwood indicated right away they were opposed to the idea because of the downtown businesses, and they want that traffic flowing through Collingwood, to stop at the restaurants, gas stations. There's a pretty noticeable lack of restaurants and gas stations and those types of things on the bypass. Subsequent to that, we wrote a letter to Town of Blue Mountains, and we summarized our thoughts. It starts on page 54 of your package. So, we just feel that the purpose of the MTO road is to move goods and services. But Gray Road 19 has anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000 cars. Gray Road 2 has around 1,800 cars a day. Now, Highway 26 is anywhere from 6,000 to 18,000 cars a day. So, our level of service isn't what Highway 26 is. So, as staff, we felt that we either be forced to upgrade our level of service, or the traveling public would be directed to a road that didn't have the same level of service as Highway 26. So, we just felt it was a bit of a risk to the public to put them on kind of a back, you know, a bit of a back road, for lack of a better term. Number two, we just didn't really see a huge reduction in travel time. Depending on, I mean, if you're Friday afternoon, yeah, I guess. But generally, it's quite a bit farther, so you kind of lose, you're moving, I guess, you know, maybe faster than the speed limit. But it's an increased distance, and it's just, it doesn't seem to be a lot faster. We were concerned about the intersections at Gray County. The intersection on Gray Road 19 and Gray Road 2 isn't signalized. Gray Road 2 and Highway 26 isn't signalized. We really didn't want to encourage drivers to use non-signalized intersections. We're also concerned about the cost. So, if the trucks started following this route, there'd be clearly wear and tear on Gray Road 2 and Gray Road 19. That would affect the life. It would affect maintenance. And just, there's a lot of cyclists and farm vehicles, and especially on Gray Road 2 and 19, and we just felt that it would just, it's not an ideal route for bypass, because there's a lot of kind of local, slower-moving traffic on those roads. In addition to those, we kind of felt there hadn't really been a traffic study. We weren't sure if people would take the bypass or not. The increased level of service I already mentioned, increased construction. We felt that maybe Gray Road 2 and Gray Road 19, if it was effective, would get really busy, and then those residents would be upset with the increased traffic. So, you know, we're just kind of pushing the problem from a Highway 26 resident into a Gray Road 19 or Gray Road 2 resident. And just in general, just kind of a little bit of confusion in that if you weren't going all the way to Thornbury, and you wanted to go Highway 26 west, you know, past Blue Mountain somewhere, Craig Leith, or, it would be a little bit confusing to motorists to know the alternate. The alternate is kind of a long, winding path. Whereas, you know, if you look at the Owen Sound Bypass, if you're going to Sobel, it's pretty straightforward. You're gaining a lot of time not going through Owen Sound. It's not very long. It's pretty clear where you're going. This one, we kind of felt, maybe it would confuse motorists more than anything. So, we wrote that letter to Town of Blue Mountains, kind of expressing our concern, and I know Collingwood did the same. They subsequently passed a motion asking us to support the plan. There's also an MTO letter. MTO is not objecting to the plan, which I guess they wouldn't be. I mean, less traffic for them is probably a good thing. So, it is a large benefit. You know, I can't deny that it would probably be a benefit, if it's effective, if people are taking it. It would be a large benefit to people on Highway 26, some of the residents of Blue Mountain, which is probably the ones most impacted by the high-traffic levels. So, and just the other thing I was going to mention, we are still working with the Town of Blue Mountains on the Highway 26 EA, planning staff and myself. We met yesterday with staff from Blue Mountains, and we're still kind of looking for options on how to make that trip from Collingwood to Thornbury a little better. Everybody who's been there, it's, you know, it's pretty trying on your patience sometimes, but we just don't feel maybe that this, from Gray County Transportation's point of view, is the right way to do that. So, that's why we're not supporting the resolution right now from a staff level.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Comments? Councilor McQueen?
Thank you, Warden Barrett. And thanks, Pat, for that, bringing that map up. Actually, if, in the report, if you, I don't know if council members have gone to the Highway 26 Transportation Study of the Georgian Triangle area. If you go to Group 4.1, that's the start of where the MTO figures the bypass from Collingwood around, or to get around Collingwood and eventually to get through Thornbury and up to Meaford. And it's been pretty broad strokes. I got it here in the computer. And basically, it follows this path. And that, I won't go, I'm not going to bore, I think it's 166 pages is the Kohl's Notes version of it. But, yeah, that one right there. And I think it's with page 16. Anyway, that, this report was done a couple, three years ago, and at that time, the MTO thought their, thought what First Street and Collingwood, which is 26, was going to reach capacity in five to 10 years. So, we're already three years past that, where it's getting near the point where they're going to start to extend the bypass from where it is, from the Poplar Side Road out through. And their first brush was to put it out, County Road 21, and dump it out at Craig Leith. But at that, and that's, I think, where Pat came with the four-laning of from 21 up to 40. Eventually, though, you'll tell you, if you get into alternate 4.2, it comes around and goes up over the mountain, actually goes up on the map on 19, and then comes up Highway, or County Road 2. So, we're, I think in the future, and it's likely a few years out, we're going to be looking at the highways taking over those county roads and updating them to that. So, I think this just is to start to get the traffic to come around that Georgian Bay area, the Craig Leith area, which is all dear to our hearts with the shoreline, and the highway right alongside the road is not an ideal. That's the evaluation. It's up, it's a page or two before that, then, Heather. One more. There it is. Those yellow broad strokes are where the MTO figures that the realignment will be, you know, starting, I would say, likely in the next seven to 10 years. So, this signage, basically, is just to help get the traffic off of 26. And to Pat's comment about the truck traffic, the topography of that doesn't really lend itself to trucks. It's going to be mostly car traffic. There will be the odd truck on it, just because it, you know, it is way up over the escarpment. It's the only way, actually, between there and St. Hampton. Once they close off that one county road by the quarry, that'll be the next alternate to get up over there. So, this is, I think, time we started to give the traveling public a few alternate routes, and so that's why this was brought forward. Thanks.
Councilor Ardell?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If you've ever come through Collingwood on a Friday night, you know that the jam ups. There's so many cars, and people are always asking me, "Is there another route we can take?" So, I tell them. The people that are coming up from Toronto, Kitchener, or whatever, are not going to go to the grocery stores on a Friday night when there's that much traffic. They want to go to their chalets. They want to go to their seasonal homes. They just want to come and plunk themselves down in Gray Highlands or Blue Mountain, and then maybe in the morning, they go up and they will go shopping in Collingwood or any parts of Simcoe County. So, they want the fastest route to get there. And it's the same thing when they go home. So, having a little bit of a signage to direct those people, when they're coming up, to be able to get to their places, and then relax, and then go back out the next day, yes, they are going to go shopping, and for Simcoe County to state that they're not going, they're not going to be very happy. It's going to affect their stores and their businesses. I have a business there. And wow, it is, it's so incredibly busy. It's unreal. Trying to get home on a Friday night is crazy. Collingwood had the extension put in there because they couldn't get anywhere else. They needed, they couldn't put the traffic flows on those small, little arterial roads. They wanted to move them quickly. So, if you've ever come up, and you come up the bypass, you come through two roundabouts, I, when I'm coming home from Stainer, I'll take the Poplar Side Road, and I will come home to Clarksburg that way, only because I do not want to drive 40 miles an hour on Highway 26, because people are unaware of the speed there. It's coming through Collingwood, it's 50, 60, 70, then 80, and then it drops to 60 again, then it goes back up to 80. So, takes me probably to come from Stainer an hour and 10 minutes. If I go the alternate route, I can be home in, doing the speed limit, maybe 40 miles, 40 minutes.
You ever do the speed limit?
No. But it's just...
So, you're home in half an hour.
Yeah, it helps having some friends in the police department. No, I'm kidding. But it is a great alternative, and I think if people had the signage, they will go out shopping and doing their business, going to the banks in Collingwood or wherever else the next day. They just want to get there the fastest way possible and safely. So, and if it's affecting the agriculture, I'm a farmer. We don't have problems during apple crop with all the people that are on the roads and the cyclists. You know, we obey the rules and we, the travel portion, and get our crops off, and we don't have problems. So, I just have a hard time with what Simcoe County said, and I don't think we were part of that discussion at Blue Mountain, being Gray County, Simcoe County, and having a discussion and not involving us. I just have a difficulty with that one. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
My experience, the traveling public will find the shortest way they'll find, no matter whether you put signage up, they'll soon figure it out where they want to go. Pat?
And just for clarification, yeah, Reg from Blue Mountain really called that meeting. So, yeah, it's really Blue Mountains that is the firm believer in it. But could you get that report back up there again on the, sorry to... So, the alternative bypass option was looked in that report under Alternative 3-3. Shows the bypass on Gray Road 2 and Gray Road 19. Yeah, right there. See, alternatives, it's slightly different, because that one uses Poplar Side Road all the way to Gray Road 19, and then Poplar's kind of stirred around now. But that was actually, if you go to page 13, I think, maybe, maybe it's 15, wherever they evaluate the alternatives. 16? Yes, right there. So, see that Alternative 3-3? At the bottom, there's summary. So, that small blue dot is least preferred. So, they did look at that option. I guess it's least preferred based on those other factors above. So, MTO did look at it, and that's what we feel. It was least preferred in this report, and it's kind of not really for us to start it up again after they went through their EA and thought it was least preferred for them. So, just so you know, it is in there.
Okay. Other comments? Councilor Halliday?
Three short comments. We do have a traffic calming expert who lives in our municipality that we could utilize to address this issue, but that's not my preferred option. One of the things that, when I first bought a business on County Road 13, County Road 13 was listed as a scenic route, and it was signed as such. I don't know who runs the scenic route signs, but I'm suggesting this is certainly a scenic route, and perhaps it could be looked at as a scenic route. When I also drive some of the major highways, 401, whatever, there are what we call emergency bypass routes, and they're signed as such. So, if there is, God forbid, a major accident on Highway 26, to have a designated bypass, emergency bypass, could be something that could be considered as well. I think the simplest one is the scenic route. I don't know whether Gray County looks after scenic route signs or not, but the one on County Road 13 is pretty old. But I was always happy that, you know, I had a business on a scenic route.
Help me on that, this, Pat, but I think there are two totally separate things, whether you're calling it a scenic route or whether you're calling it an alternate route. To me, that's two.
Yeah. Well, I'll have to look into scenic routes a little bit. That is something that I'm, I really haven't had to do too much since I got here, so.
I can look into that a little bit. Seeing the difference on that, then. Councilor McQueen?
Just briefly, I know that, you know, you're saying we're Highway 26, slow road. Widening it would make solution and making, there's no place to go? I guess there's the mountainside. The other thing on that map, it showed that corridor a few years ago, which was unfortunate, that the direction, maybe a county council didn't take, but Gray Road, Simcoe County Road 91 was also another alternate route that, instead of going north of Stainer, you go straight through, and you go right up the mountain. And you're right, Mr. Warden, they do find that, they find the easiest route. They do go that route. That's why there's over 1,000 cars a day on there. But now it's been reduced to a little cutier, and it's going to be, still working on whether it's going to be closed. So, if it ever gets closed, your alternate route of Gray Road 19 is going to get even busier, because 24 up to St. Hampton is when there's a truck going up that hill. It's slow. You want slow. You go up that hill when there's a truck ahead, and you just don't get up that hill very fast. So, I mean, the vision of having 91 as the alternate route would certainly help alleviate this problem. But it's still open, and hopefully comes back to not be closed. But if it ever gets fully closed, you're going to have even a bigger problem there.
Councilor McQueen?
Just to further to the amount of traffic that's going to be on County Road 19 in the future. Where that little blue dot is, there, just about the middle of that picture, that's Castle Glen. And there's already draft plan approval, I think, through the OMB for about 1,900 homes and 20,000 square meters of commercial. I think that when it's all built out, I think there's supposed to be around 5,500 people surrounding that little blue dot. That's about the size of Stainer. So, and I think there's even signalized intersections, if I recall the plans, and at least two roads coming out of that place. So, I think that within the discussion, I think that we need to take a look at over the 20 years, because that is just waiting to happen. As soon as market conditions become favorable, that development's going to go ahead, and that road is going to get seriously busy.
Okay. We have a motion that's duly moved and seconded in front of you. Any further discussion, then, on the motion? To not proceed. Okay. To not, ready? Call the vote, all in favor? One, maybe you do a count, or hold your hands high, if you would, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Motion carries. Or then not at this time. Correspondence D was asked to be added by Councilor McQueen regarding the letter from Mr. McGary at the Roma Conference.
There is one paragraph that talked about appointments. And so, just at our last NEC meeting, which I had the pleasure of being graced by Mr. Burley. He was there for a period of time. He didn't stick around to the end. I don't know why, but, anyway, saying that, at the end of the, at the end...
Point of order, do we have this moved to be able to discuss it? Just a point of order, Paul, to move it.
Bringing that forward, then, Councilor Echols. You're moving it, okay? And seconded by Councilor Mackey. My apologies. Mr. McQueen, continue.
So, again, Mr. Warden, and a part of that paragraph that talked about, which I'm trying to find here, with regards to appointments. So, at the end of the, our meeting, five of the appointments will not, no longer, these are public appointees, will no longer be coming back. And so, some of those appointees have had a combined years on the commission, up to 23 years. So, certainly, those five appointees will not be, so there will be a space for five new public appointees coming forward. I think, Mr. Warden, from probably your, from the correspondence that we received, and maybe from the communication that you had, that the minister wouldn't commit to a representative from this area, or Gray County, or geographically placed, because in the past, we have not had a public appointee, anyone from Dufferin, Simcoe, Gray, or Bruce. in the past, we have not had a public appointee, anyone from Dufferin, Simcoe, Gray, or Bruce. And I think that came out loud and clear last summer, going through the process of the expanded land. So I think it indicated in the letter here that there were 100-plus names in there. So stay tuned. The ministry will make those appointments, but I just wanted to bring it up to you, Mr. Warden, that there is space for five new public appointees.
Yeah, I think to your point, it's not what we asked for. Our meeting was to specifically have someone from Gray because of the amount of land we have in there, and she skirted it and did not answer directly. So I guess we'll see.
Action will speak louder than words, Mr. Warden.
Fairness, maybe we look at a presentation at AML, following up with the same thing. So that would be my recommendation. We do anyway, but we have time before then. So, okay, anything else then regarding the letter? Yep, okay. Any further discussion then on the motion, which really is to receive the letter? All in favor? That's carried. So we're now down to other business, which really was that. Any notice of motion? Seeing no notice of motion at this time, good news and celebrations. Counselor Fosbrook.
I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge Agnes McFail Day tomorrow. Thank you.
Any other good news and celebrations? Counselor Echols.
Along with that, I believe that Agnes McFail, there is a, at the Gray Highlands Museum in Flesherton today? At school? Sorry. Yeah, McFail School, recognizing Agnes McFail. Seven o'clock it starts. So I plan on attending that. Thank you very much. There's a job fair in West Gray today, a very successful one, I understand, in Owen Sound last week. We have looked at the Durham Arena for the job fair. Had hoped to have 25 employers there, and we had to cut it off at 35. The interest was tremendous. So looking forward to 2018. If you don't think that you're going to be back, maybe you want to apply and get in early, go down to the job. I just threw it out there for everybody. I didn't commit one way or the other. Gail, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Good news and celebration?
This weekend, Solgene Conservation, their Maple Fest at Solgene Bluffs, Saturday and Sunday. One of the, in the area, one of many Maple Fest celebrations goes on, but it's a great chance to get out to the Solgene Bluffs Conservation Area just north of Paisley. I know it is kind of promoting Bruce County, but it's more on the Conservation Authority and the new horse park that they have there for anybody that does camping and horses. Wonderful experience on the 375 acres, give or take. I believe there's 30 some odd kilometers of horse trails that they have there, and some of them will be on display, and the organization is there for that from the Conservation Authority.
Thank you. Just a plug for Gray Roots also for this Saturday with the, we're just confirming that, March 25th, for the maple sugar noon festival at Gray Roots on this weekend as well. Okay, seeing nothing else, I need one more motion. Moved by Counselor Patterson. We adjourn. All in favor? That's carried. Thanks, everybody. That was an eventful morning.